Good evening, we welcome you here to the West Valley City Council Meeting. We note that we have a fulcrum present here for our council meeting today. And we would mention that we encourage the wearing of masks or social distancing here in the council chambers. With that then, we'll begin with our Inside the City video.
Westbound, number two lane, black Nissan, no seatbelt. The hundred deadliest days of the year, we're doing a clicker ticket seatbelt enforcement. We're out here watching cars as they pass by, making sure that they are wearing their seatbelts. Seatbelts are important because they actually keep people in the vehicle and so they don't get hurt or severely injured in an accident. Studies, statistics have shown that if the driver is wearing the seatbelts, ninety-two percent of the time, children are wearing their seatbelts. So if we can at least get the drivers to wear their seatbelts, kids will be wearing their seatbelt also. And we want to truly help the West Valley citizens stay safe and not get hurt. Westbound.
Good reminder. Let's see. We have a few people here tonight, that's great. We do have our minutes of August seventeenth. Council, if they're okay, a motion on the minutes.
I'll move to approve those minutes, Mayor.
Second.
Property before us, hearing no further comments on them, without objection, the minutes will be approved. That sounds like it's unanimous. We do have our public comment period. We would mention that we do have a public hearing on the property on Forty-Fifth West. That will be a separate public comment. On that one, that was dedicated just to that issue. This regular public comment is for all the other issues that might come up. So with that then, we have a number of people who have signed up to speak. If you signed on this sheet, but you're here to speak on the Forty-Fifth West issue, just let me know and we'll return to you when that comes up in our agenda. So let's see, Brian Pitcher?
Yes, here.
Okay.
Forty-Fifth West property.
You're doing the Forty-Fifth West, okay. Pat Scherzinger? Is it Forty-Fifth West or?
Forty-Fifth West, yes.
Okay, we'll come back to you. Paul Nichols, he's probably not Forty-Fifth West, but forty-one hundred South.
Paul C. Nichols, live at fifty-three twenty-nine West, forty-one hundred South. The neighbors to the west of me was supposed to have gravel in the driveway three years ago and it still hadn't arrived. I've mowed about it before and it still hasn't been done, so. They come, it's a sweeper, the sweeper cleaned all the sidewalk and everything else today. That helps. They cut a few trees off, but not enough for me just that. That's why I'm on a, that's need to be gravel, be covered up with gravel. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jim Visok?
Joy. Good evening. The only thing I wanted to bring up tonight is, driving around the city on Saturdays and Sundays, there's a lot of these pop-up yard sales, fifty-six hundred, there's several of them. I know our ordinance enforcement guys aren't working on the weekends, or if there is, there's only one, but it'd be nice if they were out because it looks really bad in our city when there's a car pulled over on fifty-six, forty-one, and they're setting up a yard sale. So just wanted to bring it to the attention, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Clint Weber?
I'm on the Forty-Fifth West property.
Okay. Mike Markham?
Mike Markham, Alice Circle, more of my soapbox here, we're code enforcement. Do we have code enforcement anymore? I tried to send a file to Nicole of a bunch of pictures in my neighborhood, but I guess it's just too big. I've got on Regine, semi tractor being rebuilt in the driveway, all the fenders off of it, plastic on it being painted, miscellaneous other parts sitting in the driveway. And this property, prior to this, the semi was shown to some big people that should pay attention to it, but it doesn't happen. Got another house on thirty-two hundred West that is a repair garage, seven cars in the driveway with one mechanic. So tell me if, you know, if we still have code enforcement. I've got a house up on the corner of Millarama and thirty-two hundred, that's nothing but a big weed patch out on the corner. I've got a house on the corner of twenty-seven hundred West and Winchester that has weeds above the four-foot fence. I think that's a little long, same house. You can see into the backyard unfortunately, where they've just got stacks of debris. Front yard is full of weeds up over the fence. Now, a big pickup was the sixteenth, which was last week. They've already got their mattress and box springs and frame out. We've got a house in the subdivision that's cut down a tree some time ago and everything is still just laying in the yard mingled in with the weeds. We've got a house full of debris, which has looked to me like it's never been cleaned up. You know, granted, we're in the middle of a drought. I think people are using that as an excuse to let their yards go to crap, but they could at least mow the weeds that's doing well in their yards. It's like I've said before, the weeds in my yard aren't my problem. It's the weeds that the city allows these other people to grow and fester in their yards that the seeds blow down, mix in, make it difficult to have a nice yard. There's another house I took a picture of that Lane and I drove past, which is absolutely atrocious. Says, there's really nothing we can do about it because they're grandfathered in or something. I didn't know you could grandfather in a shitty yard. We've got another house that they broke up a bunch of concrete, threw it to the side of their property, now it's a, it's a big giant weed patch. And then I took some pictures of it that I wish I could show you of one of the ladies, seventy-five years old, widowed, beautiful yard. Another picture of an eighty-year-old widow in the neighborhood, a beautiful yard. Another picture in the neighborhood, the guy got the West Valley clean and beautiful yard. But there have been people that have turned him in telling, saying there's weeds in his yard. They're not weeds, they're exotic plants. So you know, if we still have code enforcement, parking enforcement, which I don't believe we do, there was a trailer that sat on forty-one hundred South on about Twenty-Eighth West maybe, sat there for almost three weeks, loaded with debris, until the plastic on the bags started deteriorate and the garbage that was in the bags was falling on the road. And this trailer was from the curb halfway through the bikes, bike lane. Not that I use the bike lane, for three weeks, just short of three weeks. I've watched police officers' cars drive past it and do nothing. It finally disappeared last Friday. Who's out, who's doing what? Where do we draw the line? Who takes care of the, you know, who's responsible for the trailer in the street that sat there for just short of three weeks? And I know it was three weeks because I left town for part of it. When I came home, it was still there. So who's responsible for what in the street? Who's responsible for what in the, in the, in the yards? We have nobody. I don't know what the rules and regulations are for the code enforcement's officers. You know, what percentage of their time is in the field versus in the office? Or maybe in the courts? I don't know, but I would think they should be able to get out and drive their district at least every thirty days. They're not that big, they can drive around if they're working. You know, there was some talk that Councilwoman Lane was talking about what are, what are expect, what do we expect of our employees? Good question, now what do we expect of our code enforcement officers? What do we expect of the parking enforcement officers? Is that, I got two minutes left? Oh, because my clock didn't come on, thanks.
It's actually over five minutes. There is a limit of five minutes in this portion of. Is anyone else here to speak to general items? If you're here to speak to the issue on Forty-Fifth West, we'll do that in just a few minutes. Yes, come forward, state your name and address and.
Hi, my name is Sarah Hedser, I live at sixty-twenty-one West Wending Lane. I just have a few things I wanted to say. First of all, Governor Cox declared a state of emergency due to the water and the drought because ninety percent of the state is in severe drought. And I've noticed myself and some of my neighbors have gotten notices regarding our grass not being green. I have stopped watering because of this state of emergency because I believe we need water to survive and thriving comes later. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. So we received this notice and we're getting issued fines for not watering our yard and that is very upsetting to me, especially during this drought. I also already have plans to local scape our yard, but that takes time. And we have to go through the process, we have to take the classes that are required and we have to come up with a plan that the city approves. And so I was being given a week to get our yard sorted. And so that's, you know, I can't afford that. Seventy-five dollars a day is what they're charging us. And it's just because I'm following what our governor has declared as an emergency in our state. And I have heard from other neighbors that they had changed their yard to create a desert landscape and that they were fined for not having a lawn. I can't confirm whether or not that's true, but if that is true, I think that we should be encouraging people to reduce their lawns, to conserve water and create more, more drought tolerant plants and more local plants so that we can thrive and have enough water to survive here. And so I mean, I think our ordinances are out of date and out of touch and they need to be considering what our, what our state is right now, what our needs are in this, in the city and in this state. And, and yeah. I'm sorry. Also, I can understand that you want to, you know, make sure that our property values are staying the same, but we do have to consider that we need water to survive here and we're not going to have good property value if we don't have enough water to survive. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we'll close our public comment, come back, Mr. Pyle, any comments?
Yes, Mayor, I had just a couple of things I wanted to bring up from the weekly report that I submit to the council. I want to note that the work is done on the next, or has begun on the next phase of twenty-seven hundred West. That's the south portion from forty-one hundred South to forty-seven hundred South. So you'll start seeing that if you haven't already noticed. And also wanted to also highlight the grand opening for Mountain America building there across, on Thirty-Fifth South, right across from our Fairborn Station area. That's a project that greatly improved the aesthetics and the, and the economy of the location there at twenty-eight fifty West, thirty-five hundred South. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Council members? Okay. I guess I would mention that we recognize we're in a drought, but I don't think the intent was to authorize our yards to die. And I think there's a fine line there, we're trying to be very flexible. But if people are using that as a reason to let their yard die, then we will probably deal with that. By the way, it's not required, people don't get tickets for not having grass, but they do have to have landscaping, forty percent of their front yard, ground cover, whatever. Anyway, let's see, next we have on our.
I didn't have my mic on. Oh. I just wanted to ask, and I think because this is an extraordinary situation, that I would like to know if there has been any additional communication to the residents about the existing enforcement or those rules around that? Just because the water, I mean, that's come up multiple times and that is a hot topic. So I would like to know if, if we've done anything extra in terms of putting additional messaging on the website or additional outreach just so that folks are aware? And if they have questions, that they know they can come to the, to the city to address things first before getting a notice or a fine or something like that.
I think that's a question for Mr. Pyle because I don't know, I don't, don't know.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. We have put increased messaging on both the website and our social media channels so that we can give as quick and as updated information as we can. As the mayor did note, our ordinances are trying to strike a balance between the drought situation we have, which, as the one lady that got up and spoke, is correct, we do have a situation. The governor however, did not say stop watering or using water. He said be wise and he gave some common sense suggestions for, you know, watering time period wise, that sort of thing. Bottom line of all of that is, yes, we understand that people are wanting to conserve water and that's great. We also understand that that does not, that's not a mutually exclusive goal. You can maintain your lawn, your yard and your landscaping and save water at the same time. And our, both of our, both our ordinances allow for that and so do our code enforcement efforts, which are very flexible and have been flexible throughout this drought season. So all we're asked, all we're asking for here is, yes, for people to work with us. Councilman Fatimah who brings up a good point that if you have questions about what you can do or need help for ways to keep your landscaping in a mode of staying alive while at the same time saving water, we're more than happy to help them with that as well, as well as give them more time or time to comply with code enforcement. As we've heard here tonight, we often are taking shots on both sides of that equation. Some people think we should enforce code enforcement rules more. Some people think we should enforce them less. So we're doing the best we can to balance that equation. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Good description of the situation. Although I will say that I sure appreciated the last couple of rainstorms. It turned some of my brown grass almost green, almost. So. Let's see, we will now move to our public hearing. This is on application GPZ dash thirteen dash twenty-twenty-one filed by Brian Pitcher. This is the property on Forty-Fifth West at approximately forty-two seventy South, forty-three twelve South. And once we have the public hearing, then we will hear, or we will deal with three items. Ordinance fifty, twenty-one dash fifty-one, which is a general plan change. Ordinance twenty-one dash fifty-two, which is a zoning change. And resolution twenty-one dash one fifty-two, which is a development agreement. And depending upon how those turned out. The proposal here is, as I recall, there's a, let's see, twelve-unit mobile home park, twelve storage units and a triplex that was built well before the city came into being and before there were actually any zoning requirements or restrictions. So these were all put in before that, so they were, and some things are grandfathered in, that one where they're actually buildings. And this applicant wants to change the R-one-eight, which is for residences, to M in order to put in storage units. And that's the required zoning and the development agreement would prohibit anything else other than those storage units. So that is the issue before us as to whether that should be approved or not. It's one point eight one acres. So what we will do, we will open it for public comment. We'll invite you to come up here to the microphone. And so this is a little different, you won't see a five-minute timer. We ask you just to be judicious in your use and if the issue has been covered by others, you know, share your part that you're wanting to. All comments are addressed to the mayor. It is not question and answer time, it's not a debate. It's your time. We'll not interrupt you, we'll let you have your say. And then we'll bring it back to the council and have some discussion here. With that then, we had Brian Pitcher?
Good evening. I, I didn't know if I was going to make it tonight. I got my COVID shot yesterday and it really kicked my butt today. So I told Steve that, where'd he go? Where, there he is, over there. Trying to see what I could do there. Okay, let me log in here. So I just, I'm not, wasn't sure what to exactly say up here. Mine is Brian Pitcher, I have a lot of experience in the, in the real estate industry. Salt Lake had my real estate license since two thousand and four. I've sold as an agent over a thousand homes, flipped two-hundred-and-fifty. I have close to eighty rental doors. What I, and quite a few of them are here in West Valley City. And what I try to do is I try to improve everything that I own. I don't want to be a slumlord, I want to improve the best that I possibly can with what, with what's allowed. So, you know, as far as the specific property that's there, it's pretty rundown. It's been rundown for a long time. It's one that was inherited and it's a non-conforming use, which means that it's really hard to improve it without, with the current zoning, because there's really nothing I can improve it to. I can try and make it better with what's there, but at the end of the day, it's still not what the city wants. So what, that's why I proposed after talking to Steve and trying to figure out other options, felt like storage would be the best possible use for that property as far as high as the best use, which would clean up the area, there wouldn't be as much crime in the area. There would be cameras, high security around that area because that's part of having storage. Lots of block walls around, the traffic wouldn't be that heavy because most people very rarely visit their storage units. They like, it does get cars off the roads because a lot of people don't park in their garage because they have so much stuff in their garage. So if they have an opportunity to get a storage unit that's fair, that's priced fairly, then now they can start parking in their garage again. The taxes, the tax revenue from something like this would be a lot higher than what it is now. Now, I understand that the city has a zoning of R-one-eight, single-family homes. It would be very difficult with the shape of this lot to ever put in single-family homes. And so with what is currently there, it's going to be difficult for me to improve it without some sort of zone change, whether, whether it's for storage unit, whether it's for multifamily. I think storage unit is the best play, I don't have to acquire more properties to do that. I have talked to multiple neighbor, all the neighbors around me and nobody wants to sell. Nobody wants to do anything different, everybody wants to keep it exactly the way it is. Which not, there's no problem with that. It just makes it hard to develop things when everybody is pretty comfortable where they're at. And so I'm trying to improve the property. And if I can't do storage units, then what can I do? Is the bigger question. I think storage units would be the best play. It would clean up the whole area and improve this, improve the tax base. So I guess that's it, thank you.
Thank you, next is Pat Scherzinger?
Can you put this up on the screen? This is a picture of what is proposed.
We have.
We have it.
We.
Can you put it up there so everyone can see it? I mean, unless they have their paper with them. I just want, my name's Pat Scherzinger and I live at four oh seven seven West Kestrel Drive. I have lived there for forty-one years, so I'm old. But I'm not quite that old as, half of my life has not been there actually. However, this was something I did not expect at all. We have lived there and we've made all kinds of improvements. We've put different things into the home, we've put different things in the lot. We've added just whatever we can afford, you know, we've lived there, we raised three daughters there. I think I have quite a bit of difference because I, a difference in what I supposed I was going to have to say and what is going to be said. I'm not used to doing anything like this, but I felt like that I really did need to be there today, this evening, and I slept most half the afternoon because I haven't gotten any sleep at all since, since I got this card in the mail. And I got the card in the mail on the seventeenth of August. So I just barely found out about what was going on. I had not heard any of what's going on here. And you know, people can do what they want with their property, as far as I'm concerned. I have lived in this particular home, like I say, for forty-one years and I have seen things you guys wouldn't even want to see ever. My back window in my kitchen and my patio doors face the cement block storage units that you guys are talking about demolishing. When we first bought that house in nineteen eighty-one, we were told that the city, well, it wasn't. Well, it wasn't a city then, I don't think, but we were told that we were going to be able to have. Six or eight foot cement wall that was going to be put up between us and the storage sheds because. They were commercial and we were, we were residential. Well, that never happened. And that's been forty one years ago. However, somebody, I don't know if it was West Valley City or who, put up a chain link fence. That had the slats through it. And that's done. That's what we did. I read, I planted rose bushes and did all that to make it beautiful. All the rose bushes died because that ground is worthless and I, not that I have green thumbs, but I. I did everything I could to make them live and they died anyway. So, and plus we planted fruit trees and they died. So anyway, as time goes on, you know, you just kind of get used to what, what you're, what you have. Which was my home, a nice long backyard. My backyard is on this map. And see, I'm, I'm not a good map reader. So. So anyway, I get to Fortieth West over here or forty, whatever, and this is the back of my, my backyard right here. And this is my neighbors. And this is all that, this is the cinder blocks that the storage sheds and this is just an empty lot. And it's been empty, whoops, excuse me. It's been empty since we've lived there, sort of. If you consider, nobody has done a thing back there. There's never been any cleanup, nothing. And you know, you, it's just. I have not wanted to cause any feathers to ruffle, but. We have had to call West Valley City's finest several times. When you live in an area like that, you see everything under the sun. There's never been a sign back there that says you can use these lots. Certain days of the week or certain hours. It's just twenty four seven constantly. The people that have those storage sheds back there, use them for everything you can think of. They use them for automobile repair shops and they use them for parties and it just goes on at the list. You know the list. You, you're in. West Valley City in the council chamber, so you know what is there. So. We have had some really serious things happen. We've had people. Decide that that whole lot back there was going to be the garbage dump for West Valley City. Well. I didn't realize that until I saw the lady climbing up the big truck. So I had to, I didn't even call. I was so intimidated. By that time that I just wrote an email to West Valley. I, I looked it up in the phone book or Googled it or whatever. And you know what happened? That was cleaned up within a week. West Valley people came out, I guess. I didn't ever see them. And anyway, they had to clean that up. We also had people, and, and I don't know who the owner is. I don't care to know because there's been nothing done. I don't know. There's a lot that could be done with that lot, but it wasn't. So we had to make the best use of it that we possibly could. Then somebody decided that they were going to put their RV homes back there and make an RV park. Well, the RV park looked right into my kitchen window, right into my living room. I didn't know what to do. People had moved into those RV parks, that RV park. There was only, there was two RVs back there. And no electricity or no plumbing that I could see. I didn't know they'd moved in there, but my sister came down and she lives in Idaho. And she said, Pat, people are living there. And I said, well, how do you know that? Well, it's shaking all night long. Anyway, and then, and it was during the cold weather and they'd get up on top of the RV and sweep it and all the snow off of it. So anyway. I had to do something about that, so I wrote another email to West Valley City. I thought, and I apologized for having to write again because I, you know. But I'm not ever going to go back and tell somebody, get that out of here, or, or I'm not going to go back and say. You know, you're way out of bounds with what you're doing. Uh-uh, that's not my job. So anyway, I'm sure West Valley City's finest came out again and pretty soon those RVs were gone. So it's not, I've not had problems with West Valley City doing their job because I've always had that. My husband is a Salt Lake City Fire Department Personnel, E M T, and he worked for thirty four years. So I know kind of what. You know, goes on and he's told, told me about. Trailer parks and different things that people were to be taken out of their homes and trailer parks and. And anyway, he has told me things, stories that are sad about people that have, you know, that. Have a hard time getting going and everything and, and I appreciate that because I haven't had most. The life of a. Mother and a, and a homemaker just to see my roses die. So anyway. I, I still can't hardly figure this out. I am petrified because of the traffic on Fortieth West. And I, somebody had spoken about that, so I really don't want to get into that because you said not to, you know, do double up or whatever on the information. Am I done? Oh, okay.
You have the time you need.
Okay, and then. So, to be honest with you, I just, I had never been back there. I've just seen across my fence, we put in a fiberglass fencing back there. So the whole back of our home is fenced. It also has the fence that West Valley City put in years ago and, but it's a, it's a nightmare back there. I went, we went back there last night or yesterday evening. And my husband drove me in the car because I have never been really back there to say anything about anything. Well. I was absolutely shocked at what I saw. There's two cars that's probably been there for years parked out in the middle of this area that they want to put. That business or something is supposed to be going in there, not just, not just. Cinder block fences, but this great big huge business is supposed to be right there in my backyard. So anyway. There's all kinds of debris in that, in that area. There's. And, and even behind the sheds, there's two cars that looks like it's been there forever, but. Now, I can't say that they've been there forever because I don't know that because I haven't been back there. The fence is complete shambles, not our fence, but the fence that the West Valley put up. There's all kinds of, I mean, there used to be a big trailer back there, but it's moved. And so now instead of the trailer there, we've got all kinds of graffiti. And I would just invite you guys, and I'm sure most of you have been back there or wherever, you know, to see. Because I don't. I don't think. That. That ha, that has, any of that has ever even been touched. There's no security back there, nor have I seen any. There's no lighting back there. There is not even a gate to keep people away from those sheds. There is a gate, however, that's sticking in through. As you go into the entrance, there is a, a gate there that's completely rotted and, and rusted. We saw that yesterday. I never saw that before. And so it's, the Mexican kids used to come over there and play and I'd say, be careful, guys. Because there's cars, there was cars back there and this, and you'd hear the kids laughing and playing. Well, okay, that's fine. And then you'd hear them crying. Because they fall, they had fallen and gotten hurt. But there, but there was nothing to stop anybody from going back there. Except yesterday, when I went back there, I will not go back there again. That's going to stop me because. There's all sorts of debris all over everywhere and, and it just, you know, old car parts that's rusted and everything. Okay, so now you've heard the bad part. I'm not going to go into all of that. We've lived there for this long that we've seen a big change in, in the people that live there. I don't mean the people that live there. I mean the amount of people that live there because Fortieth West has got great. Two or three great big huge complexes that's apartments. It's got. Single family homes, it's got duplexes, it's got every kind of homes you can imagine, trailer parks, I mean, whatever. These people have made their homes in West Valley City. Some of them are from out of the country. And, and I know these people want a, a fresh start. And so, you know, I don't know if this would be a fresh start for them or not. And, and I don't know who owns them, the, the trailers or whatever, but there's a lady that, before we got to the. Road that leads from Fortieth West back, clear back to my house with, with nothing in between. You can see clear back. The back of our home. And we made the wrong turn and when we made the wrong turn, we went up into another. Trailer court, park that I didn't even know was there. Beautiful. The land has been meticulously kept. I didn't even know the lady. I just knew her name. And I thought, well, if this isn't a problem, you know, it looks good to me. Well, that wasn't the right road. So anyway. I, I have a problem with. With mostly the, the traffic there. There's all sorts of places and we're right down from Home Depot. And so Home Depots. Both of the, of the road or both of the lanes merge into two lanes. Right there, there's a Home Depot on a Smith and all that. So. And this is proposed one way in and one way out. I don't know about that. I don't know lights. I do see fire hydrants. Storage sheds, I don't think a storage shed. Would do anything back there but make more mess. And you know, I don't want this to be not a West Valley's worst nightmare. I don't. I want this to be. Something that it's, if it's built. I want, I want there to be security back there. I want there to be. The roads that lead in and out of the big building there that's going to hold light materials, which I don't know what for sure is. Except it's building material. Truck has to go in to bring the stuff. A truck has to come in, go in to go. To take the stuff out, so there is a business there. It's going to be noisy. It's gonna, it's gonna take away from everything that is like a home and we have homes all along there. But. But, and I think that there's going to have to be a light installed there, a traffic light, because. You can't get in and out of that road. And last night at eight o'clock, when me and my husband went through there, we couldn't get back out on the street. There was so much traffic. And, but anyway, I went back there and. The land really needed some help. That area needs help. It does. And I hate to see my backyard gone because it's going to be right in my backyard. Every window in the back of my house, when you open the curtains, it's going to be cinder blocks looking at me all day long. And my sister said, you're not even going to worry about sunshine, right? Well, yeah. The sunshine will not even get back there in the day. As far as I know, I, I have been told whatever about. About the, the building. I really don't know. But you guys all know what, what I'm talking about. I probably don't. You probably think she don't know what she's talking about and you know what? You're probably right. Other than it's my home back there. I mean, not back there, but well, back in, behind our house, it's our home and we have a, we've done a lot of work. And, and anybody that wants to make an improvement, I, I give them every happiness to do that. But I don't, I don't want to be stepped on and rolled over because we're at the age now that it, you know, we can't hardly start over. And we'd have to find another place to live. I mean, if we decided to do that. But my, my kid said, well, mom, you know, how are you and dad going to make it if that? I said, we haven't decided anything yet. However, I spent a lot of time on the internet and I tell you, I was surprised at some of the things I saw about West Valley. Most of them good. Our property value's gone up. Everything's okay, except this one big thing right there. Building B. And so. We could still make our home there, you know, and we probably would and. But I'm concerned about, about the traffic for one thing and for little kids, you know. That's going to school and buses pick them up and that whole area on Fortieth West is nothing but homes. And you know this because you guys have been voted in by the people of West Valley City. And I. There's other stuff I could say, but you know, I'm probably taking up my time. And that, there is one more thing I'd like to say though. Would like to. Make an apology and a shout out to Donald Christensen. When I first found out about this, I was upset. I mean, you know, women. But I called him on the phone, I'm sure. I gave him more than he really wanted to chew that night. But Dawn, I am sorry for that. I have been awoken, awakened or whatever they're doing in our, in our United States these days. Dawn is a good guy. He was my bishop for a long time and. Anyway, I, I just feel like, I don't know that, that this is the best thing for that property. I just don't know. I think there needs to be some. Well, the zoning, well, I missed everything. The planning and zoning meeting and all of that I never knew about. I think that the planning and zoning needs to work on that road. That's on Fortieth West. If they're going to put something there, they need to make sure that it's safe. And I'm sure you guys will do that. I know you will because you love this city as much as I do. You know, I've lived here. For a long, long time. And I moved here from Seattle. And so you know what it's like up there. It's beautiful up there too. And you don't want to live in a place that doesn't look good or, you know, and the people are good too. And I really had misgivings about coming tonight because I just don't know very much about anything. I, I was on the computer, like I say. I saw lots of fun things on the computer. I saw our, our home was listed, I mean, not listed, but was on the computer. With a picture on it and all this information on it. Well, we didn't put it there. But I guess that there are people, our companies that do that. And of course, there's all kinds of homes for sale. And, but you know, I don't really want to move. And besides that, we've got this great big huge dog. And because the house right across the street has just came. Empty and, and they sold their, they're in the process of selling their home. So, and I, you know, it's, and, and in fact, I tried and tried to get. Everybody that I knew that was going to be involved in something like this. On our law, on our street, which is a cul-de-sac circle, which we love because it's quiet and we don't have to worry much about traffic. But. Lost my train of thought when I was looking at that. But anyway. They moved south and that's where everybody's moving. Our daughters move south. And I'm not going to tell you what they called my house. I mean, my property. But anyway, I, I would like to thank everybody for the opportunity to say anything. I also wrote a note to somebody here. They got that, but it's about the same thing, you know, so. I just don't know anything other than what I'm, what I've told you and what, what the impact. Has been for me in my lifetime in this property. And, and I have no clue what, what it will be, but. We, when we got our house and I'll add this last thing and then I'm going to go sit down. When we got our house, it was kind of like a fluke. We had just gotten married and we had, we were living in duplexes. Over by where the. Big stadium is that they do the, the hockey. And I was, we were renting and I wrote on the back of the check. Do you know any houses that's got, that the payment's about five hundred dollars a month? Well, I get this letter back. Yeah, come on over. I got all kinds. Well, he didn't have all kinds. He had three houses on that cul-de-sac circle that he was building. And ours was the one that was most done and. And he, he, the percent, the percent of bar of the money then was 17% for a house. We struggled for a few years, but we got that house. And that's how we got that house. But the builder held the contract. And then when it was time, he, we just went over and signed the papers and it was ours. And he didn't charge us anything. I mean, it just was, and so now I'm thinking, well, I have fulfilled whatever it was that needed done then. And I needed some, we needed, we, you know, anyway. I feel like now, we have fulfilled everything. I have fulfilled everything. Ask no callings or anything in the church anymore because we're too old. I mean, all this young people have moved in and it's great, you know? But I guess it's time to, there's a decision that has to be made. And so I'm glad I'm not the one that has to make it, to be honest with you, because there's a lot of people that this is going to affect, really. And thank you again and good luck and God bless.
Thank you. Next, we have Clint Weber.
Yes, my name is Clint Weber. Yes, I live at 4270 South and 4264 South. I just wanted to reiterate that I need to have the, we've already spoken at length about this, that I need to have the irrigation coming through my property. My property is set up. It's irrigated through there, that property, but it's not a side irrigation. It's really set up kind of, kind of weird. The other thing I was going to say, though, too, that's my main thing, is that we need to get that irrigation back. See, I have like almost 1.9 acres. And, you know, there's no way I can use Grainger 100 to water it. And so for the last four or five years, I haven't been able to water it because we had a cave-in problem back there. And I think that the builder here, and I think even with the Planning and Zoning Commission, they've even bought into it and they say it's going to have to get fixed. That's my understanding. So that's one of the things. But one of the things that I noticed back there, when you're looking at Building A, there's problems back there like you can't believe. And I've talked to the developer and I'm not sure, you know, if they can do some planning and zoning with this way. But that property, that's a building A, is really three trailers that are butted end to end. And so, well, I went on vacation one time for a week and I come back and, and of course, my property is quite extensive. And I was out of the, off the property for six days and I went back there and they had a homeless camp built back there. So, you know, of course, I called this. We just bulldozed it down. But that shows what kind of area that is. And I've talked to the homeowner, the pitcher, and he sounds like he's way on board with getting the storage units backed onto my property so nobody could get across there anyway, even if they wanted to. But I have, on this, on this building A, there's no barrier to stop them or anything. So, you know, I've always hoped that the other, the prior homeowner would have done, would have done something, but he didn't. And I think that's kind of what we're faced with. But be that as it may, but I've kind of got from pitcher that he's willing to do something about this stuff. And I don't see how he would, he can do nothing but, nothing but good, as far as I'm concerned. But, and I understand, I can see this property. I'm just back of Building A there. And there's two points, something, or 1.9 acres in there. And I can see if it doesn't get redeveloped to some other spot, I can't see him ever doing residential back there. I can't see any of those kind. It seems to me some sort of a use like this could be very, very useful, as long as it's kind of done on a limited basis. I mean, you know, I think I need to have, like I say, the irrigation water has got to be coming over. And I think we need to have some sort of a building that sections off my property from other properties because people just come over and they'll take what they want from the produce and just whatever they feel like. But that's all I really want to have to say about it. But I appreciate all your time and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to this issue? Hearing none? Then we'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the council.
I think there's been really robust discussion around this for a few weeks, even longer, actually. I'm leaning towards not supporting the change and the application. Not because I don't think it's necessarily a good development, but I feel another community member brought up the word survival before. If I'm thinking about a hierarchy of needs, I personally believe that our community needs housing more than it needs storage units. I'm very reluctant to make a zone change that's a reduce. Even if I get, this is an awkward property configuration, but I also think that the disposition of some of these adjacent properties aren't concrete, nor are they permanent or will be forever. And for those reasons, yeah, I'm not leaning in favor of it.
Want to make that into a motion?
I was hoping to get a few more comments, but if not, I would move then to deny. Is that ordinance 2151?
I will second that.
Properly before us, any further comments?
I'd like to make a comment. Don knows this, this area really well, and I'd like to hear his opinion. I know this area pretty well also. As a boy, I had a job as a newspaper delivery. And before the Scherzingers built that house, I used to ride my bike through that property and throw a hole in the fence into this trailer park. And instead of having to drive all the way around to deliver newspapers in the two trailer parks there. And when I saw the pictures in the presentation, it's the same trailer homes. It hasn't changed that much in the 45 years. And it's not getting better. And to hear the stories that Mrs. Scherzinger shared with us, it, I can see that this property has been a challenge. And and I think that that with this shape and and the environment, I don't know that that it won't be another 50 years before these things change in this area. And I think that these these storage facilities, where they have a gate to keep people from going in there who don't belong in there. It's going to have building and fence all the way around the property. I think that this would be an improvement for the neighbors to what they have. And the things that Mrs. Scherzinger said that she's witnessed in that area won't be a problem there anymore. And, and I'm not worried about the traffic because people don't go to their storage units every day. So I'm going to vote against the motion to deny. I'd rather, I think it would be better to see this this storage facility there than what we have now. And I'm not convinced that in the next 50 years, that it'll change to something better than what this proposal is. But I'd like to hear Don's opinion, if he doesn't mind.
I know when my arm's being twisted. This is a property that is deteriorated over the years. I've been in many of those trailers. They are not the best living environment either. I've been up into those storage areas that are there currently. And I know there were a couple of the men from the trailer park that were actually running a repair shop up there. It wasn't the best environment even for auto repair. So anything that will make it a better environment, I'm in favor of. I, I know I was somewhat negative when I first heard about it. My wife came to the planning commission meeting. She said that they talked with the developer afterwards. And he has a lot better vision for it. He's working with the families that are there now to relocate them in better housing. I think the only place that it could get less than better is in a homeless camp because they are deteriorating to that point at this, right now. I, I worked on a couple of the porches up there and reinforced them to make it, now you took my picture away, reinforced it to make it more accessible. And so I know there's the problem there and it isn't going to get better if we ignore it. So I'm leaning with Lars right now. We might not want just one big building back there. We may want maybe several smaller storage units. That would be up to the developer. I, I'm not a developer. But, you know, that would be his, his choice. I know that's one of Mrs. Scherzinger's major concerns is that if we put a 12-foot building back there, we cut off any view she might have of the neighborhood. And, you know, right now, she hasn't got a very good view anyway because it's as she described it. So that's the way I'm drifting right now.
Interesting discussion. Oh, someone, oh.
Well, I was just going to say, I agree, this property needs to be cleaned up. But I don't think this is the right and the best use for this property. I think there's other things that could go in here that would be more neighborhood friendly. And I've talked to people who live behind storage units in the last couple of weeks, knowing this was coming up. And they don't like being by the storage units. They were very upset the storage units got placed in their backyard. It's not the best environment for them. And because of those comments that I received from people that actually live by these, that's why this might be harsh for a little bit longer. But this is a 50 to 100-year use. And so we won't get the opportunity to improve this. And holding out a little bit longer, you know, I just think we can get something that's a much better use for the people in that area.
No, it's an interesting discussion. You talk about potential future uses. Those may or may not be there and we have no control over that. One of the issues is, one thing we know is if we don't approve this, currently it stays as it is. And that may be for six months, six years, maybe for decades. So it's a difficult question. Oftentimes, people end up living by things that weren't as nice. I am a little concerned about the size of the one building back there. I don't know. This is a really difficult one because if this does go in, although it's not nice, it does solve a number of the problems that are currently there. So I don't know. Be interesting to see how this goes.
And it may create more problems that were unforeseen. So that's the hard part.
Well, help me with that. What types of problems would there be? I mean, I can see the wall. That's clearly a problem, okay? The cinder block wall. But that effectively just kind of cuts everything off. So.
There's other things that go on. I wasn't told specifically. They just said there's other activities that go on in the storage units that are not neighborhood friendly and that they didn't appreciate in some of the storage units by their house.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments?
Only that I respectfully accept the input and insight of all of my colleagues. And regardless of the outcome of this vote, support together as a council.
Okay, hearing no further comments to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
No.
Councilman Nordfeld?
No.
And Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion for denial fails.
Now, council, before we move further, it looks like this might not be resolved tonight. Do you want to?
Yes, I think the contribution of Councilman Bueller would be important to have, given that it's a tied.
So we've had our public hearing. So since it has not passed, I assume that any other motions might be similar to pass it, then. Let's.
Is it a formal motion then to continue to the next meeting? Is that what it is?
Yes. To, but the meeting will be in two weeks.
Correct.
Because we will not hold a council meeting next week. So the motion is before us that we continue this until our next meeting in two weeks.
Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments. Let's see, we need to go to you for that.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
No.
Councilman Petis Manu? And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for continuance passes by majority.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate those who've come for that discussion.
So Mayor, do we need to continue each item?
Oh, each of them?
Yeah, so I will move for continuance of ordinance 21-52 until September 7th.
Can we put the other one in the same motion?
She had us do them individually last time, so.
Okay, yeah. I think we need to.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. It's been seconded, it's before us, so roll call vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for continuance passes unanimously.
Okay, and I would move for continuance of resolution 21-152 until our September 7th meeting.
Second.
Okay, let's just clarify that. Because on the first motion, we didn't specifically state.
Right, but he said the next meeting, which is September 2nd, I mean, 7th.
No, no, he didn't specifically state that we were doing it for one of these ordinances. Would you clarify that on the motion that was made? Because you made the motion on 21-52. Because you made the motion on 21 dash 52. Did we actually state that that was on ordinance 21 dash 51?
Um, I believe that we did because you had called for a motion on that ordinance. So even though he didn't state it specifically in his motion, that was, you had said, do we have a motion for ordinance 21 dash 52?
Okay, so as long as that's clear, then I'm okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Okay, so next was did we make the motion on that then to our city recorder?
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for continuance passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We got that taken care of. We'll now go to our resolutions.
And Mayor, I'd like to thank all those people who came out to speak to this tonight too.
Maybe we should clarify what, because it's, it might not be clear what, what happened here tonight with, with this.
Go ahead, you've got the microphone.
Because our first vote was three to three, you need four votes to pass any, any motion. And, and so it didn't pass to deny, and we didn't seem to have enough support to, to to approve the ordinance. And so we have postponed the vote until we meet again on September 7th, when hopefully all seven of us will be here. And we'll have enough votes to either approve or deny th- these ordinances. So there was no decision really made on this except to postpone it for two more weeks.
That's because next week's the fifth, on 5th Tuesday.
Right.
Okay, now on to our resolutions. These are fairly straightforward. Resolution 21 dash 153, uh, an MOU or memorandum of understanding between our city and the Utah Association of Counties for Collection Services. Uh, these are uh, to collect delinquent accounts, owed to the city originating from fines, utility bills, orders. And this is a standard service provided uh, through the Utah Association of Counties. And as you'll see on our next item with Utah Division of Finance, to be able to offset those against item, any funds uh, available through the state. Pretty routine thing to do, other cities do this. So that is the issue before us, is to authorize us to use them for the collection of these bad accounts. With that, to the council.
Move to approve resolution 21 dash 153.
Second. Properly before us. Hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
No.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority.
Next, we have resolution 21 dash 154, which is the same concept for collecting these delinquent accounts, but it's with the State of Utah Division of Finance. That's the issue before us to the council.
I move for approval of resolution 21 dash 154.
Second. Properly before us, hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
No.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay, uh, next we have resolution 21 dash 155 to enter into a mutual aid agreement for emergency fire and medical services. This is something that we've done in the past. We typically approve these for a five-year period. Uh, we are continuing that to be able to support other fire departments, other entities, to be able to jointly work together on any emergency fire or medical services. Been in place a long time and will continue to do that. That's the issue before us to the council.
I would move for approval of resolution 21 dash 155.
Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. This next one, resolution 21 dash 156 is a very interesting one. It's actually to enter into a real estate purchase agreement with the Utah State Division of Facilities and Construction Management. That is for the south end of this building. It's uh, for $3.9 million. Uh, that is actually owned by the State of Utah. They have their court there. But we have arranged with them to purchase that so that we can expand our city offices and our court to move over there from its current location just to the north of us. And uh, so we already have the funds, bond proceeds approved, and so uh, there will be additional costs that will come later in doing some remodeling. We're already doing some. We'll see what needs to be done there. That is the issue before us. To the council.
I move for approval, a resolution 21 dash 156.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments? If we don't seem to take too long on these, we did discuss them in our previous meeting, in our study meeting. So these are issues we've talked about and asked a lot of questions about. So with that, to our city recorder.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have resolution 21 dash 157. This is a reimbursement agreement between our city and Grainger Hunter Improvement District for some wastewater improvements. Uh, this is for $215,532. What happens is Grainger Hunter is doing some work for what they call the Pioneer Wastewater Pump Station. That's at 2184 South Constitutional Boulevard. That's uh, up towards the north end there. While they're doing that, and uh, there's going to be some work done, it is beneficial to the city to complete some work on the Brighton Canal Bridge that is going to be partially removed. And uh, uh, some reconstruction work there. And so we've worked it out with them that we will pay 60% of the construction cost of certain items we've identified that are beneficial to us and 60% of the engineering costs. And so uh, this, we often do enter into agreements with other entities when it's beneficial to the city, because if we had to go and do it separately, it would cost almost assuredly more because of the synergy of being able to do that together. That's the issue before us to the council.
Move for resolution of, uh, move for approval of resolution 21 dash 157. Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have item nine, our consent agenda, resolution 21 dash 158. We call them consent because these are the same items we do over and over, but they are with different property holders. This is in conjunction with the 4700 South Project where we have to go in and do some work with curb and gutter, with fences. Uh, we have to be able to access the back of their property. We reimburse them a nominal amount for that. And so this is another one there, uh, where we will be doing that. So with that introduction to the council.
I move for approval of consent agenda, resolution 21 dash 158.
Second.
If we can a second. Okay, bumped that and couldn't hear. Then with that to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have uh, some new business. This is where we meet as required by state law, as a board of canvassers for our municipal primary election that we held on August 10th. Once all of the votes have been counted, they must be officially approved. Uh, and that's what we will do with resolution 21 dash 159. And that is the final step in certifying the results of the election. That is the issue before us. We just got the final numbers from Salt Lake County this afternoon about 2:30. And those are now attached to our information here. And so to the council.
I uh, I move forward for the approval, uh, resolution 21 dash 159.
Second. Thank you. Much as sometimes people might want to change those legally, we can't. Whatever the results are, we adopt those official numbers because that represents the vote of the people. With that then, to our city recorder.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We do not need a closed session, so that completes our work for this evening. And so we'll have someone make a motion to adjourn and we'll be done.
Motion to adjourn.
All in fa- well, let's see, no, without objection. We started that with the people being electronically. Without objection, we will stand adjourned and hearing no objections. That is unanimous. Thank you so much for coming and participating in our council meeting tonight and being here.